Man Brat.
Here.
Alderman Gabhart.
Here.
And Mayor Nervin.
Here. First up, we have approval of the meeting minutes from last month, February eleventh. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion? Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections, et cetera? Hearing and seeing none, all's in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Onto our two discussion items. The first, Milwaukee River and Trinity Creek Flood Plane Modeling Review. I think Assistant Director Zader will take over and give us a little intro.
Sure, I'm sure as you all recall, we adopted our FEMA flood plane maps in July thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. During this adoption process, staff identified, I guess I'll call it an anomaly with one of the variables in the model. So we were concerned about the accuracy of the model. We were under a time crunch to adopt the model with, in order to remain in the program, so we adopted the maps. And then we decided in October to hire M Squared Engineering to do an analysis of the modeling that was used. And I have Kendra from M Squared here, she'll give a presentation on what they found. In addition to the concern over the flow rate, they found a couple other items that we can talk about. So I'll turn it over to her and then I'll come back with some follow-up, so.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. As Jack said, my name is Kendrick Gabbart with M Squared Engineering. And we've done a review of the Milwaukee River flood plane analysis, so thank you for letting us go over that review with you today. A little bit of background, as Jack just mentioned, FEMA updated the flood plane maps in July of twenty twenty-four. You guys adopted those maps at the time, understanding you wanted to do a more in-depth review of what was going on with the maps. One of those things that we know, understand the city had a concern with was that although the hydraulic modeling of the flood planes, Milwaukee River in particular, was updated, the hydrologic modeling or the flows for the Milwaukee River were not updated with, as part of this recent mapping update that FEMA performed. We also understand that there were some concerns with the increase in the base flood elevations and the widening of the flood plane specifically between Mequon Road and Highland Road, and where those increases were coming from. So these maps here, this is just kind of showing some snapshots of the old flood plane maps, the previous FEMA flood plane maps compared to the newer flood plane maps. On the left here, you can see in the blue, it might be a little bit hard to see it back in the room, but there's hatching in the middle here, that is showing the floodway, the one hundred year floodway. And then the blue outside of that is the one hundred year flood plane. And then here on the right, these are the newly adopted FEMA maps. The red hatching is that floodway, the one hundred year floodway, and the blue is the same, the one hundred year flood plane. Again, it might be a little bit hard to see, but highlighting an area here where the floodway was increased quite a bit from what we had in the previous maps. Oops, sorry about that. So this did not used to be floodway, but now in the newer maps, that is an area of floodway. Here's another area where we've got Mequon Road here at the bottom, and we've got another area where the floodway has increased a little bit compared to what the previous maps showed. The floodway was a little bit narrower. And again, it's a little bit hard to see, but here at the curve of the river, the floodway and flood plane got wider, impacting a little bit more property, a little bit more area of land in that area. And then finally, one of the other areas that we looked at was the Trinity Creek area where it joins into Milwaukee River. In the previous maps, the Trinity Creek did not have a floodway identified or delineated. Now the new maps do show a floodway delineated, which means there are properties in the floodway that didn't use to be in delineated floodway. So as Jack mentioned, M Squared was brought on to kind of do, to do a more in-depth review of the hydraulic modeling and also look into the flows for Milwaukee River. Specifically, the one percent annual chance flood flows, which is a long way to say the one hundred year flows. That's the one hundred year flood plane, how the one hundred year flood plane gets delineated for the rivers. So we looked into those flows. We also looked into the BFE increases on the Milwaukee River between Highland Road and Mequon Road. And then we also looked at the floodway expansion on Milwaukee River and at Trinity Creek. So the first thing we looked at when we did this more in-depth review was the hydrologic analysis, which again, that's just the flows used for the modeling. The original flows were developed using regression equations in nineteen ninety-one with the information, with the data available up until that date. And as I mentioned before, the mapping updates that happened last year did not include an update to the, those flows. So it was still using that information from the nineteen ninety-one regression equations. We have access to at least thirty-four more years of data now that we can look into, specifically from a USGS gauging station at Pioneer Road. There's, so what we ended up doing was using Stream Stats, which is a program that USGS has to analyze flows for river systems like the Milwaukee River. We use that to develop flows for different areas around the Milwaukee River. And then we compared those flows to the gauging station at Pioneer Road to kind of correlate those flows and make sure that they were making sense with that gauging station information that we have over thirty, over thirty years of data for. As you can see by this table, we've got significant decreases in the flows for the Milwaukee River. These are three cross-section locations along the river, one upstream of Falls Road in Grafton, one at the confluence of Cedar Creek, and then one upstream of County Line Road. And as you can see by these decreases, like this is a significant amount of decrease in flow that is really showing a significant amount of decrease in the BFEs that were, that the Milwaukee River shows along, in the city of Mequon. We also did an in-depth hydraulic review. The Milwaukee River was modeled using HECS, which is a common river hydraulic modeling system, their software. And when we did this review, we were checking input parameters, we were checking assumptions made to kind of make sure that these were things that we agreed with, that we think, to see if there were other things that we might want to refine about the model. We did come up with several areas that we thought would be beneficial to the, to getting accurate BFEs to refine in the model. One of those is of course, what I just mentioned, updating the flows for the model, that's a significant one. Another one is to refine ineffective flow areas, which I'll go over that in more detail in just a minute. Same with refining the Manning's end values in the model. Again, I'll go over that in more detail in just a minute. And also to update the floodway limit analysis used in the model. FEMA has a procedure that they recommend you follow when doing a floodway delineation. And we found that that procedure wasn't necessarily followed for this model. What was done isn't inaccurate or incorrect per se, but it's just something that isn't as commonly used. And we feel like, given the potential impacts to property owners, it would be beneficial to use the procedure that FEMA recommends for the floodway analysis. So ineffective flow areas are just areas that are used to adjust the conveyance in a flood plane. This schematic here is just showing a plan view of, if you can imagine, this is a road with like a structure, a bridge or a cross, or a culvert. We've got flow coming from the top of the page through the structure to the bottom of the page. Ineffective flow area is used to show that areas behind the roadway embankment may not be conveying flow as part of the flood plane. So those are important around things like bridges, around the Thiensville Dam, those, the ineffective flow areas are also used. When we did a in-depth review of the model, we found certain areas that we didn't agree with how the ineffective flow areas are modeled. So we thought it would be beneficial and result in more accurate BFEs to refine those ineffective flow areas. This is one example. This is showing a cross-section of the Pioneer Road Bridge over the Milwaukee River. The green over here is showing hatching of the ineffective flow area, and the gray is the roadway embankment. In this case, the roadway embankment would make sense to be ineffective and not contributing to the conveyance of flow. But any flow over the roadway would make sense to contribute to that conveyance. So it would make more sense to not have this area be ineffective, but instead showing the road being overtopped. Making this not ineffective flow would potentially reduce the BFEs or the base flood elevations in this location. So these are the kinds of things we were seeing in the model. Another thing that we found that we felt should be adjusted in the model were the Manning's end values. Manning's end values are coefficients that measure the roughness of the channel and the overbank area. This is tied to like the vegetation or obstructions in the channel. The higher the end value, the more obstruction or vegetation you might have in the channel, and the slower the water flows, which means that the water depth goes up. So we found what we felt were pretty high end values in a lot of overbank areas that were representing more vegetation than is actually out there in the channel, in the overbank of the flood plane. So we recommended adjusting those end values based on our site visits we had to the area. And generally, this resulted in decreasing the base flood elevations throughout the city of Mequon. And then finally, as I mentioned, the floodway limits was another area that we felt was, would be a good idea to adjust how the floodways were delineated in the project area for both Milwaukee River and the Trinity Creek. Again, the way that the floodways are currently delineated is not incorrect. It's just that FEMA has a way that is a recommended procedure for delineating the floodway, and we feel like it would be beneficial to follow that procedure so that it's more defendable through FEMA's process. So based on those recommendations, we've updated the modeling, and we have some results here to show base flood elevation reductions. These are just the water surface elevations. We've got the different stretches of Milwaukee River here, from Pioneer Road to Highland Road, Highland Road to Thiensville Dam, the dam to the Mequon Road, and then Mequon Road to County Line Road. Here we have the range of flood elevations for each of those reaches. Here we have, sorry, these are the FEMA-mapped flood elevations. And then here we have the flood elevations based on the recommendations that we changed into the, in the model. And then here we have the average base flood elevation reduction. You can see for most of these reaches were right around that three-foot mark of three feet reduction in base flood elevation. The majority of this base flood elevation reduction is due to the flow reduction that we talked about in the begin, that I talked about in the beginning of this. Things like changing the ineffective flow area and changing the Manning's end value did have an impact on this, but that was more in the range of maybe six inches, whereas the rest of this reduction is mostly due to the flow reduction. And then you can also see here, the stretch from Mequon Road to County Line Road has a slightly less average BFE reduction. That's because we're proposing to tie in at County, at County Line Road. So our average reduction is going from about three feet down to zero feet. Let me go back to this for a second. We're proposing to tie into County Line Road just because we're proposing to kind of keep this clean right now to the constraints of the city of Mequon. But it could be something we discuss of seeing if we want to chase these changes any further downstream, if that makes sense or not. And then the next several slides, I'm just gonna scroll through quickly. We don't need to dig into these in too much detail, but these just show, so these just show the river station cross-sections. There are several cross-sections of the Milwaukee River through the city of Mequon. And then these columns here are the flood plane widths of the Milwaukee River at these cross-sections. So over here, we have the FEMA TW stands for top width of the flood plane width. And then the M-two top width is the top width based on those reductions that we, or the recommendations we talked about. And then our final column here is the reduction in the top width. So this is mostly to show you that there are some areas that this is producing quite a bit of reduction in the top width of the flood plane, the flood plane width. There are some areas where it's not as much, five feet, twenty feet. But if you wanted to look at this table in more detail, that's what these tables show, is that reduction in top width of flood plane. Here's another view of the results. This is just showing the profile of the flood plane. Here we've got, County Line Road is where the end of the model starts here. We've got Mequon Road, Thiensville Dam, Highland Road, and then Pioneer Road. And so you can see, this is kind of the area within the city of Mequon where we've got the reduction of about three feet in the base flood elevations. This is going to be a little bit hard for everyone to see, I apologize for that. But this is a plan view of the Milwaukee River, schematic of the Milwaukee River. Again, we've got County Line Road down here and Pioneer Road up here. And you can't really see it very easily on here, but there's areas shown in red around like the bend of the river. There's a little area sliver here of red. That's showing the floodway, floodway reduction, again, from the FEMA-mapped flows to the proposed changes we recommended and modeled. This is a profile of Trinity Creek. We also reviewed Trinity Creek to determine if we had any significant changes to the way that that was modeled. We did not find nearly as many things that we would recommend changing or refining in the Trinity Creek model, either for the hydrology, the flows, or for the hydraulic model. We have a little bit of a reduction right at the downstream end here where it ties into Milwaukee River, but the rest of the water surface elevations actually tie in pretty closely to what FEMA's mapped water surface elevations showed. And then same thing, this is a plan view of Trinity Creek. We've got tying into Milwaukee River would be right here on the right. You can see right here at the edge of, or area between Milwaukee River and the Central Wisconsin Railroad would be reduction, there would be some reductions in the floodway where this red is shown. But generally past that, we're not showing much reduction in the floodway for Trinity Creek. So of course, the big question for this would be the next steps. What would we do next with this information? And one of the important next steps could, would be pursuing a letter of map change to actually go through the FEMA process, to change the FEMA maps, to be more in line with what we've been showing tonight with the reduced flows, some of the refinement to the modeling, and showing those reduction in BFEs and flood plane top widths throughout the city of Mequon. This would require some additional modeling effort because through the FEMA process, there's kind of a step-by-step process that you have to follow with different models that you set up. So although we have part of the modeling done for that, there would be some additional modeling that would need to be done to be, get through the FEMA process. We feel that it's important for the city to understand that this process could take at least a year. FEMA has about three-month review periods every time that information is submitted to them for the, through a FEMA map change. And in our experience, they will end up taking that full three-month timeframe. We would expect that there would be at least one round of comments and discussion and coordination with FEMA before having to resubmit another round of comments to the, or another round of information to them. So we think that it would be important, there would also be then a public notice period once FEMA like conditionally accepts the change to the maps, that the maps would be public notice and to accept that this change makes sense to everybody who would be affected. And then we've also talked about that the city should budget around seventy-five thousand dollars in engineering fees to do this additional modeling, the map change effort, and this coordination with FEMA that might be needed for the map change through FEMA's process. So with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer whatever I can.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the floor with, I'll lead with one question. I noticed you mentioned tying the maps into the County Line Road. Obviously, that, I mean, there's some, if you look at the modeling data and what's been used, they use basically the same flow rate at the north end, the north end of Mequon as they did at the south end of Mequon. So there's obvious errors all the way down to about where Lincoln Creek ties into the Milwaukee River. If we were to find a couple other willing participants south of us, obviously, we could tie that in farther to the south. I think there's, if we can coordinate that, there's some value because it's not like the error stopped happening at the County Line. They, they keep on going all the way down and then, they have, reality and the modeling line up again at where the Esterbrook Dam was. Maybe they don't even line up there anymore, because I'm not sure if they've reflected the removal of the dam properly. But I guess, I would, I would, I would be seeking to try and get other participants. And we've talked to some of the communities to the south already, and they're, they're paying attention and they're interested, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if we'd let that hold up this effort, but maybe we try to get them in along the way and try and meet those, marry those up at some point in the future. But with that, I'll open it up to the floor. Alderman Stalcek.
So first of all, thank you and great work. And older person, Talako pointed out that she thought that there were errors, and we talked about errors. And you know, this is, you know, all, all a point of the city trying to do the right thing by the residents and make sure that the people that are impacted by this have the least amount of impact possible, or at least something that's accurate, right? My question, and overall, I'm irritated as heck. You know, the city's budgeting another seventy-five thousand dollars to fix somebody else's mistake. What is the recoup process for the funds that are being spent? So there's a noted error on there, there's some clear noted errors. Is there a way that we can say we've noted these errors and then maybe give them an opportunity to fix their own maps? And then for us to review and then resubmit if we see something else to try to avoid that? Or if we can ask them if they can fund the, you know, restructuring of the maps moving forward? Or we, there's a recovery process for those funds, you know? It's, it falls on our taxpayers to fix a governmental agency that made a, you know, an egregious error that we're trying to rectify. So I guess my questioning is like, how can we recover some of those funds and continue along this process with the good work that you're doing?
Maybe asking the wrong person.
Yeah, well, I'm asking in general. Sorry.
You can ask me.
She spoke last and she's really smart, so I hope she knew everything.
Every state and federal elected official that represents us, and it all gets directed back to FEMA and they say no. You, they say we missed our appeal period. Of course, we're appealing a map that was generated off of data we didn't have access to, that we later found out was faulty. I don't know that we should let that be holding up any decision-making now, but you can, that'll be lobbying like hell to get our money back at the end of all this. But yeah, this isn't our fault. This goes back to shoddy work done in the, in the late eighties and early nineties. I mean, the, we didn't discuss it directly here, but the major source of the flow rate error was forgetting to subtract the flow coming in from Lincoln Creek into the Milwaukee River when they extrapolated north. It's, it's not, calling it sophomoric would be an insult. I mean, it's worse than that. It's a huge oversight. So we'll, we will be lobbying, I'll be lobbying personally, but I think we, I think we should get going and not worry about that. It's, it's a manageable sum of money. It's not, it's not a giant sum. It's not small, but it's manageable.
I will be in Washington DC if anybody wants to set up a discussion. I'm happy to take time away from my family trip to go, you know, spearhead some of this discussion with anybody that'll listen.
Maybe a little early for spring break this year, but.
I'll fly back out on my own.
I'm not afraid to travel, so. Any other questions? Alderman Bach.
Maybe this is another question for you, Mayor. When you were speaking at that recent forum, the Thiensville president was also speaking, and they were talking about their issues too with the river. Is there any discussion, are they doing a similar thing, or are we working together with them at all? Or do you have any information on what's happening there?
So I've been in conversations with them, most recently just this past weekend. They're, they're on board and willing to participate at some level with us. But this modeling segment for FEMA basically is, it goes from the northern end of Mequon to the southern end. They're just trapped in the middle. So they're, they're paying attention as well, but they're willing to be a partner in this. Any other questions? Alder, Alderwoman Talako.
No questions. I just wanted to applaud the city's work on this, coming through. I think the next step seems very logical, is that we would come up with this sum in order to continue this momentum forward. I know Jack hasn't spoken quite yet, but this affects more homes than we originally thought. You know, we don't have an exact estimate, but this changes things also from a city perspective as far as taxes and what people can do to their homes. So while we might be putting some money forward, we're giving the property rights back to our citizens where they need to be. And the city also gets to benefit from that, from them being able to make improvements to their homes for us to gain a little bit more too. So all around, I think this is a no-brainer, and I look forward to hearing all of my fellow councilmen support this, and let's move this forward.
Is there someone on the left here? Alderman Gabhart.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. In terms of what your experiences have been in the past in filing appeals and what the success rate has been in those prior situations?
Well, this wouldn't necessarily be considered an appeal. It would be, FEMA has a process to just make a map change when communities find either errors or better data, better information. That's usually what happens, is better information comes forward, and they just make a map change request through FEMA. So my experience is, I mean, I've had over twenty, over fifteen years of experience doing map changes, not quite as big as this, as for a whole community. But, and they've all been approved. So it's something that I think is likely to move through the process. I think there will be some back and forth to make sure that FEMA feels on board with the flow change reduction, because that is a significant reduction. But yeah, I mean, I think we have the information we need to move forward with that process and show them what they need to see to be able to approve the map change.
And then just an additional follow-up question. I'm not sure that anybody can provide this answer, but how does what's happening in Washington right now have an impact on this process? Either in terms of what's going to be required, or in terms of maybe the length of time that might be required to walk this through?
That's actually a good question. I think in terms of the length of time, that's a little bit of, it does shoot it in that unknown period where, as I said before, they, FEMA has a three-month review period. They've been taking that full-time. But that's been in previous years where they've already been considered understaffed. If they become further understaffed, then I don't know how long it might take them to be able to review through this information. I also don't know if they might end up changing any of the review requirements that they have if, for this information coming in. So that is a good question. That is a good thing to kind of keep in mind, kind of while we're, why we're saying that like this could be a lengthy process to get this map change approved.
One last question. Is there a period of time that we have to ask for this request? I mean, is there like a statute of limitations?
Nope. This is on our decision, on your guys' timetable of when you want to make that change.
Yeah, we can do it at any time. The thing that had a time limit was the appeal period ninety days after the public information meeting where DNR said they didn't want any technical input. They only, only wanted typographical errors and things like that addressed. This is literally their own words, which is further adds to the irony. So we're, we're actually, we're not really contesting FEMA's maps. We're contesting DNR's maps that were submitted to FEMA on behalf of the state. So I'm not sure that FEMA cares. They probably just want to get it right.
No, the only timeline issue would be that the people that are paying flood insurance eventually, you know, if, if we get the maps changed, they'll, they'll, a lot of people will no longer have to pay that money, so.
Yeah, given the error in the flow rate for, since nineteen ninety-one, it's been going on a long time. Alderman Bach.
Mayor, so in order to keep this process moving, assuming the committee is supportive, what's the next steps in finding the unbudgeted seventy-five thousand dollars? How do you, how do we work on that?
I think I see Administrator Jones reaching for his microphone.
Alderman Bach, so glad you asked. If there is a willingness on the part of the committee here this evening to move forward, I would suggest politely that direction be given to staff here this evening to pursue a contract with M Squared, the firm that did the initial modeling review that we reviewed here tonight, to pursue a letter of map amendment, if I have that term correct. And for staff to work on identifying appropriate funding sources, pay-as-you-go funding sources that don't otherwise blow a hole in our twenty twenty-five operating budget. We're about twenty percent into the fiscal year right now. I certainly don't, as the city's budget officer, want to assume a seventy-five thousand dollar cost that we hopefully have to save and make up for as we get into the latter parts of the fiscal year. So I would like the opportunity to work with our finance director to identify some other alternative sources of funds that may be appropriate for paying for such a contract. Interestingly, we have our auditors here this week. They are working to put together the preliminary audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, assuming we have some favorable results from last year. Um, it, assuming we have some favorable results from last year, that may have an impact on our fund balance, which would be one potential source of funds to, um, underwrite this unbudgeted expense. So if there is, to bring it to a close here, an interest in moving forward, uh, we would work with M Squared, uh, to get a hard number. We would reach out to our partners in Thiensville to determine an appropriate cost-sharing amount. I think I heard twelve percent this morning of.
Yeah, twelve percent of the river runs along Thiensville, but only half of it is on their bank, the other half is on our bank.
And then schedules permitting and, and understanding the urgency here at hand, uh, we would look to bring back a contract award, um, as soon as the April eighth common council meeting here in this room. If, you know, schedules align and we're able to get everything together. We also have another meeting the following week, April fifteenth, which could, which could be a fallback if we run into some complications or we need a little more time. So hopefully that answers your question, Alderman Bach?
Alderman Strelcheck?
I a hundred percent support the movement towards having M Squared, um, put forth some hard numbers, working with Thiensville and, and keeping this moving as quickly as possible. My thoughts are that residents are paying for flood insurance that maybe didn't last year. Uh, and if they have a chance to rectify it, ideally within this year, so the sooner the better. Maybe they can get a refund from their insurance company because they were incorrectly billed for that amount as it goes beyond the fiscal year. Um, the potential to get any of that back might be diminished. So again, you know, moving forward on this sooner than, sooner than later, just to have people have peace of mind and be able to plan.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, but I think FEMA's got a one-year clawback.
One-year clawback, yes.
So a very generous one year, so they, you know, the other thirty-nine years for people that they've maybe have had to pay incorrectly. That's kind of water under the bridge for lack of a better term, but at least there's the one year. Um, maybe good time for a straw poll vote. Yeah, just by show of hands, who's generally in agreement with what Will just said? Okay, good, we've got everyone on board conceptually. So I think that's, is that enough direction for staff to move forward towards next month?
That's plenty of direction. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the committee. Um, Jack, uh, you know, I was speaking freely there, uh, just a moment ago. Anything that you'd like to add relative to what I described?
No, we'll just have to verify what M Squared, their schedule. I think it sounds like it's doable, but we'll just make sure that they have the ability to do the work when the time allowed, so. But, yeah, correct. And we'll reach out to other communities downstream as well and see if they want to participate as well.
Yeah, now that we've signaled an intent to move forward, I think we should contact those just to our south. There's been some interested parties. And, um, surely they'll be interested in the preliminary report, you know, as, maybe as much as we are, once they see the numbers, so. We'll see what we can shake loose there, but I think we should get going. And then if others want to join the fight, maybe there's other, there's definitely be some synergy of the work. Maybe the, the whole effort doesn't cost that much more, we can all cost share a little bit more in the fight together, but. Maybe to the north too, I'm not sure if, uh, our neighbors to the north are interested, they may be. Uh, Rob, Alderman Strelcheck?
Yeah, from a cost-share perspective from Thiensville, let's ask M Squared, what would it cost if they just did the study for their portion alone? And maybe just not only look at a percentage and find a number somewhere in between.
I don't, well, I'm not sure you could do it alone because they're a donut in the middle of McQuinn, but. We'll consider it. We'll find a, a method that's equitable and defendable. Any other comments or questions while we have the consultant here? Thank you, good work, um, yeah. I'm excited to get, move on to the next phase, as many are, I'm sure. Um, I think with that, we have enough to move on to our next item, unless there's any parting words. All right, thank you.
Thank you much.
Uh, next topic before us is the twenty-twenty-five community survey.
Uh, Mayor, while they're sitting up?
Sure.
I want to thank, uh, Carrie and, um, for all of her work on this, it was invaluable. I'm sorry that it's not done yet, you have a lot more to go, so, but, um, also Justin for his direction on that. Public Welfare has been working on this for a while and I hope that the common council members have been either following along with minutes or through our agendas and have been looking at the work we've been doing. Uh, we sent out, um, surveys or questionnaires to the different committee, other committees, boards and the staff to make sure to get their input and to make sure that they, um, got their questions answered. As a matter of fact, we did a, one meeting we held totally for the fact of making sure that when we went over the survey, that a lot of those questions were, their questions were, were answered for them. We put a lot of effort into the fact of making sure that the questions were not pushed in one direction or, or leaned in one direction for it. We tried to make sure that, um, the clarity of the questions and that they were easy to read. And, uh, tonight is our Committee of the Whole's opportunity to get input on this and to do any changes that would need to be done. Feel free to, whatever you think of it. Um, and at that, I'll turn it over to Carrie and Justin, they're gonna give a little presentation on it.
Well, thanks, everyone. So, um, I'll kick off a little bit of history. Um, this is the now going to be the fifth survey completed by, uh, the, the, the city on behalf of.
Short pause for technical difficulties here.
Perfect. So the last community survey was completed in twenty-nineteen, um, and a lot of that work was done back, um, then by Public Welfare over the course of several meetings to create the survey that went out and wrapped up in twenty-twenty. And, um, as part of this process, Public Welfare Committee, um, began, um, working on a new survey here in February. A contract was awarded to, um, to ETC to assist the city with the survey in September of last year. And since then, um, we've been working through a number of steps that was, that has resulted in the survey that's included in tonight's packet. And, um, Public Welfare will continue to work on the survey post, uh, uh, tonight. And if any aldermen wish to attend, there'll be a special meeting on the twentieth of this month. Um, feel free to join Welfare as we button up the survey and go into next steps. Something further do, Carrie's gonna touch on, um, the current survey format a bit more.
So the, the twenty-twenty-five survey is made up of twenty-two questions. And just to give you, um, some framework from the twenty-nineteen survey, it had thirty questions. So these, the five, there's five sections. Um, section one has the community attributes. So it asks residents to rate the city, um, give their perceptions and how they want to see the future size. Um, section two, um, satisfaction with various city services that we offer. Then section three goes into development. We ask about residential, industrial, as well as the Port Washington corridor and what types of businesses they would like to see in that area. Um, so section four, we move on to parks and open space. Um, so we do talk about the pool, what amenities they would like to see if we were to build a new one. Uh, we talk about the roadside paths as well as park initiatives, both from the plans that just took place. And then section five is the demographics. That in the previous survey, it was in section one, um, but the consultant said that people don't necessarily want to o- open up a survey giving detailed information about themselves, so we moved that to the end. And we'll go through these again, um, in a few slides so that you can give your feedback on each section. So moving forward, um, this is the timeline we're looking at. As Justin just mentioned, there is going to be that special public works meeting, um, on March twentieth. And then in mid-May is when the survey as well as postcards are going to be mailed out by ETC. I, let me back up. So the first week of April is once we get your feedback is when, um, the final survey instrument from us is due to the consultant for them to put the full survey together to mail out. Um, so then the survey's going to close, um, probably around the beginning of July. Um, that ti- exact timeline of the due date, um, will still be determined at the next Public Welfare meeting. And then August is when we'll get that final report from ETC of all the results. So you will see ETC back at Committee of the Whole on September ninth and they will give a pres- presentation of everything we have gathered from the survey. So now we will, we'll go through each section and thank you to those aldermen, um, that gave us feedback ahead of time. As we get to th- those sections, I'll, I'll point out, um, maybe when a few of you may want to speak. So I, let's start with the cover letter. I think, um, Alderman Gebhardt, um, you had a suggestion of how to rephrase, um, something in the cover letter? If you would like to start us out?
Sure, great, thank you. And appreciate everybody's effort, as I said in my email. I know there's a lot of time and energy that went into thinking this through and being thoughtful with the outcome and getting us to where we are here today. So, um, really I was just trying to provide some constructive feedback and know that there's a lot of other discussions and smart minds that have been, uh, part of this process. So with that said, I, you know, the area that I focused on in the letter was really the how. How is this going to be used? I think that's a really important piece. I think we've walked into a situation where we've had, um, a, a bit of a conflicting message where the stakeholders in the community have used prior reports from consultants and/or surveys to think that that is going to be our North Star, our guiding light. And I just thought that there might be an opportunity to go ahead and soften that a little bit and just say it's one of many data points or one of many variables that we use in making our decision. Um, you know, everybody wants the world, but at the end of the day, you know, we've got to factor in costs and a lot of other variables that on the surface aren't generally recognized or fully, um, understood. And so I just didn't want, uh, there to be the perception that this somehow was going to be the only tool or the, the top, uh, data point for us as we're making some of our decisions here moving forward. So that's my comment in regards to that.
Thank you.
So if there's no, if there's general agreeance with the committee, we can work on making that amendment, um, to the cover letter.
Yeah, I don't think there's an issue in including, including that inside of there. I think it's a, a good point to put that in there for it.
So then we can move on to section one, which was community attributes. And Alderman Gebhardt, I think you may have had something to say about question number three.
I did. And, um, let, let me maybe make a general statement and this kind of goes for the flow of the survey as a whole. Um, you know, we're, we're asking the opinion of the residents, which we certainly value. The other side of the equation, and you've heard me mention this before, is at what cost, right? You want this, but at what cost, right? Um, and so, um, as we come back specifically to item three, I struggled a little bit with that one. I felt like it was a leading question, uh, meaning that everybody, you know, wants to maintain a rural character density and future development, right? Versus just asking what their opinion is versus the, the size of the community, if you will. Um, but, um, again, I'm, I'm very much in support of the, uh, you, you know, the, the way it's set up. But again, the other half to that, at what cost, right? And so, um, one of the things that I want to be careful of is, everybody likes status quo. The reality from where we sit in terms of, you know, managing costs and, uh, inflation and everything else, status quo isn't achievable without some additional sacrifices along the way, okay? So I thought maybe there could be a way to be more thoughtful with that at, you know, uh, as that was, uh, phrased.
Thank you.
Can Alderman Gebhardt just clarify, are you, how do you, where in this, this is about population size? So what does it have to do with cost? I'm just not drawing the connection. Question three about, if we want to maintain rural character and density, so what's the ultimate projected population of McQuinn down the road?
Help understand it better. If you just kept everything static and inflation keeps on marching on, you will almost certainly have to raise taxes at some point. That's the, at the cost of what? Now, I don't even know if we could quantify it because we can't predict the future, but what is certain is that inflation will keep on happening. And if nothing changes ever, you're a penny and a half away from hitting our levy cap limit. Something will change, have to change. You either have to cut cost or raise revenue on an ongoing basis. I think that's the nature of Alderman Gebhardt's question. There's, status quo is, I mean, that's one of the reasons we want to, we'll get that in a bit when we get to the other section. That's one of the reasons we want to look at expanding industrial is frankly, you need to add tax base somehow to generate revenue to feed the machine. I mean, we can, we can look and we have looked hard at cutting and trimming, but we've been, the tip of that pencil is so sharp now. You're really at the point where you're, you're faced with cutting essential things or having to raise revenue some other way at some point in the future. And I think we'll have a whole workshop on that coming up in May when we discuss long-term, you know, municipal finance and the operating budget. But I think that's the nature of Alderman Gebhardt's comment.
Well, well said, Mayor, and I, I agree. You know, as I look at it in terms of levers for additional revenue to offset some of the increased cost, future development and adding additional residents to the, this community, uh, are essential for us to be able to, again, cover the cost.
At the same time, you have to be careful. Yeah. I mean, we see it to our north in Grafton, right? There's just, there's too much too quickly perhaps, and that puts other strain, uh, strains and, and pressures on the city, so it, you know, even if you have to grow, you have to do it smartly. Um, it's a, part of that's, we'll get to it, yeah, I'll see you over there. Part of it's having to deal with, it, there's so many variables, this could be like a whole page-long question, but you can't do that in this format. I'm not sure we could calculate the cost of anything accurately that far out anyway, but I, the point is well taken.
Just to answer Alderman Gebhardt's, um, question number three there was, um, it's been in most of the surveys also just to see how the thought process of the residents have changed a little bit. If that has changed from beforehand, there, they had specific questions to this and so we're kind of doing as a comparison for the, for the two inside of it to see how the perception of the residents have changed to city size and stuff like that for it.
Alderwoman Talaco?
To question three, sorry. I interpret that as it would be a question to tell me from the residents, how fast, like land is going to get developed. Change is always inevitably going to happen, but that's going to help us decide, are we going to hold our standards of the one-acre lot? Or are we going to say, hey, look, they do want this high density, um, they do want a higher population in these areas? So I think it can be a question that can show us more information than saying like, oh, we hit thirty thousand, we're going to cap it. I don't think that was the intent of this question. I think it can be used for other interpretation. And as far as like it being leading the rural character and density, um, it's kind of historically what McQuinn's always been called, right? Ever since I was a little girl, you know, it was always McQuinn was this rural little city. Um, does that need to be in the question? Maybe not. What's your opinion on the population size? And that could give us an idea of how fast people are able to adjust with growth.
Alderman Strelcheck?
I'm just, so, Alderman Gebhardt, can you, so you want kind of the precursor language taken out of that? I'm just trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish.
That would be one recommendation. Again, it's just constructive feedback. I'm not here trying to backseat drive in any way. I'm just sort of. I'm just sorting some feedback out there again, a lot of smart minds that have gotten to this point. If the shoe fits, great, wear it, make the adjustments. If not, and there's a, a broader purpose to it. I'm great with that.
So are we just looking to say, in your opinion, what is the ideal size of Mequon? The future state ideal size, is that just what we're trying to ask as a data point? I, I'm just trying to get the, we do the survey to understand what resident perception is and resident desire is for the community. So that we have, again, as, as Alderman Gephardt shared, the data point in which we can put in our decision tree, right? So I'm just trying to understand which data points we can put into this question to.
That was the intent of the committee.
Yep.
To see what is the ultimate size so we can make decisions to control the rate of growth. And I think most of us would agree on the committee that Alderman Gephardt's suggestion is a good one. And we can simplify the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with it either way. I was just trying to understand where we're going with it. We're trying to understand a different data point.
Alder Meyer.
You know, it's coming to, pertaining to cost and that on, on the different items and that, I think we struggled at. At public welfare to, we were thinking about that too, and we should include all these different things aside about cost and, and different options and stuff. And then realized we have such a limited space to do that. And sometimes explaining some of those things are very difficult to do, to make it clear, concise and do it in a really short. Sentence or two, you know, so we opted to try to do the best we could in, in clarifying that question, the questions that pertain to it. And then got off from there, but I agree with you, in, in the perfect world, you could have what the costs are and. And because everybody's going to say, like we had in other questions in past surveys. Was invited that, yeah, I'm for that, yeah, I'm for this, yeah, I'm for this. Are you for it if your taxes went up and he went, no. You know, so, you know, we, we've had that in, in the, in the past with it and, and. Almost I'm in every server, we had that inside of there and they said the same exact thing, so we're kind of assuming that outcome. On, on some of these questions when it comes to, and doing some of the projects that we may or may not do.
Yeah, the, the full depth of that question could probably occupy a two hour meeting with this body who knows the ins and outs of it. Better than the average citizen. It's really, it's a really difficult one, but. I guess we're taking an action to simplify the question a little bit. We don't have to do it. Right here on the floor, but the staff will take a note. Should we move on to the next one? I predict lots of ones and fours for that one because you're either going to say, keep it as it is, or I don't know. But we'll see what comes back.
Okay, so we will move on to section two, the satisfaction with city services. Does anybody have any feedback of maybe some services that we did not include?
You have like a four C additional comments and then under five. It would maybe have a spot for additional comments there too. Because I guess if someone's like very dissatisfied or dissatisfied, they're probably going to tell us why. And it'd be nice to gauge. Why? And then usually if you do something really well, they're going to tell you why too, so that would also be great even just to share with the city staff that does a terrific job.
Looks like there's just a sliver of white space at the end of that page where you could slip that same question in there.
Noted.
Yes, thank you. We will note that. So if there's no other comments there, we can move on to section three, which talks about development. And we did get a pre-comment from Alderman Brad on maybe including a map of the Port Washington corridor. It's described but not shown like in those other two maps that were in that section. So that we did talk about that at the public welfare committee. And we, we thought there might be two options to that, either include a third map or make one map that is larger. That shows A, B, and C. So I don't know what, what your thoughts are, anyone's thoughts are on that, but that was discussed earlier this evening.
I guess I have a question. I recall from last time we did this, when you send out paper copies. There's a magic number of pages before you get to the next most expensive postal limit.
I did speak with a consultant about this as well today. And he thought, he didn't want us to go over six pages of questions because he thought you lost people right away.
Sure.
But he thought if we added a map, that it wouldn't be another question or more things to read. So he was, he was okay with that and he said he would work with us to see how we could best do that.
Okay. That'd be my concern because all of a sudden you add a page and all of a sudden it costs three times as much for the postage and your, your budget gets shot. Okay, as long as we're kept tracking that. Alderman Strelcheck.
I personally would like to know a little bit more about apartments and in. When Mayor Worth was on council, we switched from. Multi-family apartments to, you know, more and smaller clustered group apartments and I.
In-town center.
In-town center in specific. I thought it expanded beyond that too. If I remember correctly, I thought that was just more broad and overarching. I didn't think it was just limited to town center.
I thought it was within town center, but Kim and Jack might. Yeah.
Other, other communities.
Town center zoning, yeah.
Other, other communities are building bigger complexes and, and with those bigger apartment complexes are coming some amenities that go with it. Not that I'm looking to do that, I just would like to understand the pulse of the community as it would relate to. Maybe in, you know, eight family apartment complex or apartment complexes that would be, you know, fifty to whatever, you know. Just a larger complex. And what that would mean, just. It's a question that'll come up and I think we'll appreciate the data point in years future, at least seeing it once, whether it's on this one or, you know, some future one.
Do you think that we should? Add a separate question inside there for that then pertaining to, you know, something and an opinion to. Do you think that the city of Mequon has, you know, enough apartment buildings? Do you think that we should increase apartment buildings? Do you think that it should be concentrated more on like residential? I mean, do you think that would be? More of a question, a question to put inside of this one specifically down over here just pertains to the industrial area down over there, so.
Yeah, I think that would just be a good general question, you know, but I would have sizes and, and amount of units and. In an apartment complex and I would look to. You know, under a hundred units or under, you know, fifty units or whatever, you know. Partner with our development team and or Alderman Parrish, you know, with his, his commercial experience and, you know, commercial buildings. Just to really kind of understand where that, where that building trend is, is at just from a, a benchmark. Is it fifty units? Is it on average a hundred units per building? You know, and then just ask that, just ask that simple question, apartment.
Yeah, we could, we can also kind of extrapolate some of that information even out of this part down over here where. And they're talking about the industrial area and switching back over to the residential because if we get a clear and positive. You know, very opposed for apartments, you can pretty much put that, that would be kind of straight across the city. In areas except for ones were designated beforehand for like town center and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Which really doesn't have any room to do anymore in there, but.
My, my pulse on the community in general is just, and I want to ratify the thought with the, the, the survey is. We're getting a lot of pushback on apartments and, and larger complexes until we made that change in town center to show that we. Preferred the smaller size as a community and, and we preferred it in town center. And I just, I want to ratify that opinion with a, with a survey as either being correct or incorrect. So I was just kind of looking for a, a neutral question on, you know, what that meant.
I think that specific policy is Kim and Jack clarified, but that was in regard to town center zoning. I, I know where you're going with this. I kind of see it as a problematic question to formulate in the two weeks between now and when this needs to get done.
And if it doesn't get done, it's, you know, relate to the game what they ask, it just, I, I would just. I would have just asked for a line item apartments of so, such, such and such a, you know. Buildings per unit and apartments of, you know, another quantitative number of, of. The committees, the public welfare committees choosing, you know, a, a large or something fifty per unit. And then you'd kind of have your answer just in and of that self, you know, they either want a smaller cluster or they want a bigger one. They hate them all, they like some, but they don't like the other. At least it'll give a, a pulse on where the community is.
Alderman Parrish, I think had something to add.
Yeah, I, we, we had a bunch of these types of questions at the committee level where ultimately we. It's such a complex and nuanced subject that to try to explain where we're coming from and what we're trying to achieve would, would be almost impossible. I think we're kind of with that question, if you put a general question like that, I think we're punting our. Not only our policymaking, but our case by case decision making. Because i- if you recall on the last survey, we did have a similar question. And the result of it was that ever, pretty much everyone or a reasonable amount of, a significant amount of people were in favor of apartments when it wasn't in their district. As I recall, so everyone on the west side of town was like, yeah, you can go do as many apartments as you want on the east side of town. So I just, I think it's a very, it's a very broad based question and I get what we're getting at a lot of the, we hear it from our residents, too many apartments. I know, I know, but if you have a survey question, I, I mean, it kind of shuts down every development that's proposed. I think, and I think this would be a really hard question to have in the survey and I don't know how we would rewrite it. So unless other council members can think of a way to handle this or if you want it in there, I just. I think we need to trust the planning commission and the council to, you know, with these apartment projects. I don't know that it can go in a survey.
I mean, we can take a look at it on the twentieth and see what, what we can do for that, something that's, you know, clarity on that, but. I don't like, like the mayor said, I don't know if we can get that all together in a short period of time to get it over to that.
Maybe you can get a simplified version, but yeah, to slice it so thin that, that require a lot of staff.
If it doesn't work, I can respect that. It just wasn't asked, you know.
Yeah, I think they're going to, they'll kick it around and see if they can squeeze it in in a. In a general enough method that it doesn't make it too hard to do. Other woman Talaco.
Uh, just a quick thing, for number seven, like you have the residential development, you have the little cluster of like what it means. And then you have the questions and then the maps below. Is there a reason why the maps didn't go under like the little thing about it and then question seven below?
It, it had to do with space because originally the maps were separate from each other, but we needed it to put them together. So we tried to put them adjoining to the questions that were being asked.
Okay, I was a little confused even looking at these maps myself. It took me a while to kind of understand them. And it just might be a little bit better to, if you can put them above question seven, might help people.
We have a whole separate page for maps, maybe it'll be easier.
And also we can't split up like those charts. They can't be split onto two pages either. So we were trying to do the best we could with the spacing.
Yeah, we can't split the charts up, otherwise the machines don't. They won't pull the answers out of them correctly.
The AI assisted bot that tabulates things will get confused if a chart goes over a, a page.
Or a page break, yeah.
Or maybe if it's super clear, like map A, big bold letters, use map A for this, map B for that. It's on a separate sheet and it can be a little bigger. I think it'll be a little more straightforward. It's just. I, I agree, it's, I, I even had to look at it a couple of times, so don't feel bad. It's, it's a map of a pretty big area squeezed into a corner of a page and then there's two of them side by side and.
Yep, we can take a crack at that.
Yeah. Any other questions on seven? I've got a little bit of a comment for question eight. I think the part that's missing in eight is why we're considering it in the first place. And it really is just, we need something to happen on the revenue side and. Industrial is a great way to do it because it doesn't cost us a lot on the expenditure side, but you get all that tax base. Now, I don't know how you want to formulate that question, but just a little more context, otherwise I'm anticipating you'll see a lot of people. I'll just leave it the way it is. There's no, why would you want to change it? That's, that's the part that's missing and I, I. There's a slippery slope of making that way too convoluted of a question, but. Administrator Jones.
So Mayor, to, to your point, there's an interesting page within our annual financial report, otherwise known as our audit. Which provides some level of data relative to our tax base. Maybe we can just pull the, the most recent figures from our twenty twenty-three audit. And describe in very rough terms, you know, the composition of Mequon's tax base. Residential versus commercial versus industrial. And use that as a, a preface to providing the additional context that you're, you're.
Single family homeowners pay eighty-five-ish percent of all the bills around here, but. If you had a healthier industrial base, there'd be more of them offloading the single family homeowners on a, on a levy basis.
So that's just one thought.
Yeah. Some way to say that in a couple of sentences or with some context.
Five words or less.
Yeah. It's hard to say that concisely, I.
Okay, well, that brings us to section four, the parks and open space. So if anyone has any feedback regarding that section.
Unless there's any questions on question nine. I don't see any, okay, on to section four. Alderman Strelcheck, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just, just with the pool, we've got a waiting pool and then we've got a splash pad. Just so the committee knows the trend in pool building is to do a zero depth entry with a water feature on the zero depth entry. And as you get deeper, it just becomes a swimming area, so those are typically combined. I don't know that you're going to get much data points from that, but. Other than that, the only other thing I had a question on was like hot tub during the day. In the summer, if we go to a year round something, a hot tub maybe would be better, but I don't know that we're gonna. I see that as being a, a pretty hefty ongoing expense. Just in general, but it's a data point for sure.
Yeah, some of those items only make sense if you have other portions of them, like if it was indoor, maybe you have a hot tub. But if it's outdoor in the summer, maybe you don't, but I don't know if there's any harm in capturing the data, but we'll have to figure out what we are going to do with it.
So I, I would do waiting pool slash zero depth entry or something or zero entry. Would be the only change that I would make. Unless you, you as a committee were asking if we wanted a separate waiting pool just for people waiting.
I don't, does anyone have, from the committee have that answer?
Well, we, we talked about a little bit about some of these items, like the indoor one too. I mean, is there going to be an indoor, does that mean indoor pool? Do you keep that on there or is it because I don't think we're going to be doing an indoor pool? We talked a little bit about the hot tub, so you know, we could. I don't know, we, we, we don't have to put those in. We could put some other language like you just suggested. If people would, you think they'd understand that?
If you, just because you had a lot of interest in one, doesn't mean you have to pick it either. Yeah. Alderwoman Talaco.
I kind of looked at this question as wasted space. Because I think a, maybe a better question would be. What are you willing to have an increase in your tax base for as far as a pool or something more? I look at this, I'm like, I like that, you know, then from that, you know, pick one, two, and three, but most of these are like standard features nowadays. That you're going to get with a new pool in order to draw people and to create revenue and it's going to come down to what the space can hold. So while some of this might sound great, it just might not fit in the space. So pretty much the pool is going to get what our residents are willing to afford and what the space can hold.
We, we debated even having the question. Quite honestly, I still debate it in my head as well. I think there's also the question of will it be overlap with the civic campus study that's happening right now? I think they might be looking at the same stuff. And also your comment isn't necessarily true about, you know, are they willing to pay more in taxes? Because as you know, the city's been great with its fiscal stewardship and the debt levels have been going down. And I think staff showed us there was a path to do this without taxes going up. And I think that's the messaging we need to somehow convey. Because yeah, if they see this and they think we're considering whirlpools and waiting pools and this and that, that's. I don't know, so I guess.
Well, we don't have cost estimates for any of it either, so even.
And I saw staff nodding that it is in the civic campus study, so I do worry about the duplicity in surveying here. We have two different surveys asking this question now.
Maybe the important question to ask is do, does. Maybe the important question to ask is, do, does, does this survey get the answers that consultant needs in the timeframe they need them? And maybe the answer is, on this item, maybe no. Cause I think they're gonna wrap up in August, September, and this is gonna wrap up in August, September. And we, unless there's a, a lot of data sharing ahead of final tabulating, it's almost like counting exit polls on election day. Who do we think's gonna win?
Separate process.
Yeah, I don't see that going well. And it may be, maybe this question is just overrun by events and the schedule of the way things are playing out. It makes room for Alderman Strelcheck's apartment question.
I just wanted to clarify, when I ask about the taxpayer base, it's like the sky can be the limit if our citizens want to pay for it. We can make it indoor year round. It's gonna come at a cost. We can do it fiscally responsible and they're gonna get X, Y, Z amenities, because that's all we can afford while keeping the tax base low and being appropriate. Or if they want to pay a lot, hey, all right, then let's do this route, you know? So I think maybe a financial question for the pool might be a little bit more on park than what features you want.
If the committee agrees, we can append a paper and take that to the twentieth.
Yeah, maybe try to capture that. If it gets too difficult, we could always omit the question. So I think it's, we don't have cost estimates for anything. We can't, we can't necessarily predict how much of an impact. The impact might be zero, but it might not be much. Yeah, I don't know.
When our department heads went through the survey, that was a question that they thought could be omitted. Um, but the committees thought that this survey is going to all residents and the civic campus plan is not necessarily going to all residents. And so that's why the committee decided to keep it.
Well, they'll take a crack at it on later this month and if it survives, it survives. If it, if it, if it doesn't, because of that, you know, some of the questions and concerns, that, that's a decision the committee can make.
One of the things we did.
See the chair nodding his head yes, so.
One of the things we did do is, is under question ten, and it said from a list of items in question, list two or three. Um, we did, we're gonna put some clarity inside there and how they need to indicate that, putting the option number in there for it. Um, otherwise you'd probably get half the people writing in, writing it in instead of putting the number inside there, then we won't get any data back from that at all if that happens.
Any other comments on it, on this or any item below it on the page?
Okay, well, I think that might wrap this up. If no one else had any comments, uh, we thank you for all your comments and we will take it to our meeting on the twentieth.
Everyone good? Any parting comments or questions? And your meeting is on the twentieth? Okay. So a few days in advance of that, so staff has time to compile them and, and get them into the packet. Okay. Um, Alderman Strelcheck.
Just comment, really great work to the committee on this. I mean, it's.
These are always tough.
You, you're gonna get complaints from the committee. Oh, you could, you didn't ask the question right. And it's just one of those deals where you're trying to ask an unbiased question. You're not trying to lead. You're trying to, you know, just get the, the, the most amount of information that you can for your decision making. And I think the committee did just an outstanding job on this. So thanks again and your patience, even with the questions tonight after you put in all the hard work is, is greatly appreciated.
All right, any final words?
If you guys have any feedback, if you can get to us by Friday, end of day, then we can probably include it in the packet if it comes after. That's fine. We can always just pass it all at the public welfare committee meeting.
Okay. Perfect. Everyone's got their marching orders. Um, before we ask for a motion to adjourn, uh, just quickly go over the committee of the whole planning calendar. Our preview of coming attractions next, next month. Uh, we're talking about Lake Michigan bluff text amendments. Finally, right? We're calling Alderman Box Bluff. Um, pun intended. Does anyone else have any ideas for future, future committee of the whole meetings? Alderman Strelcheck.
Yeah, I got a call from a concerned resident last night. They may come speak at the, the five minutes, uh, where you can speak on a non-agenda item. They had a break in at their house over the weekend. And their neighbor had a break in the week prior and they would have liked to have known, uh, that there were break-ins in the neighborhood. So I'd like, as a committee of the whole, just to kind of review, or even at public safety at some point, just the, the police communication plan and how we're keeping our residents informed. And, you know, what's reasonable to request of them as they're involved in an investigation. So just kind of some discussion on that, just to see if we can't move that needle forward a little bit and provide a little more information as our residents are, are concerned about break-ins of this type.
Anyone else?
Would, would you like to bring that to the public safety committee first next month, or is that a committee of the whole thing?
Yeah, yes, sir. If that individual comes forward to speak, you'll hear a little bit more background as to, you know, kind of their objections. They, they were really great as far as communication over the phone and articulated it really well. Um, I can provide a summary for that and just kind of highlight what, what we're looking for in that space.
Anyone else? Ideas? Oh, Administrator Jones.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, just one preliminary word of caution relative to the committee of the whole planning calendar. Um, after next month's election and after next month's two meetings in this room, which will be the August eighth common council meeting, as well as the August, I'm sorry, April. April eighth, common council meeting and April fifteenth organizational meeting. This room is going to be shut down for construction. We are waiting until the April first election and the two meetings in April, and then this room will be unavailable for use, likely between mid-April and the end of September. So staff is currently in the process of identifying alternative locations where we can hold monthly common council meetings, planning commission meetings and monthly municipal court hearings. Um, we are looking at a number of different options and we'll have more information in the coming weeks. But that may, it may impact our ability from a space constraint standpoint, um, relative to the committee of the whole calendar. So there may be some massaging that goes on after next month's committee of the whole meeting. Just want to throw that out there. Uh, we'll do our best to stay on schedule, but, um, we're gonna be on the road at some point here in the very near future. Thank you.
We're evicting ourselves.
Uh, Minister, I might, uh, check with the Legion Post to see if they've got some, they got a pretty.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
Area there for stuff.
Perfect. I like that. We can pay the bartender to be ready for afterwards, though. All right, with that, there are no other items for the planning calendar. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, motion in a second. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're adjourned. We will immediately convene as the sewer utility district commission, um, and call the meeting to order. Let's call the roll again. It's been a hour or so.
Commissioner Strelcheck?
Here.
Commissioner Tilaco?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer? Commissioner Hancher?
Here.
Commissioner Bach?
Here.
Commissioner Parish?
Here.
Commissioner Bratt?
Here.
Commissioner Gebhardt?
Here.
Commissioner Nurban?
Here. First up, we have approval of the meeting, meeting minutes from February eleventh.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, comments? Hearing and seeing none. All is in favor of approving the minutes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is resolution forty-one ninety-four, resolution approving the purchase of a replacement sewer televising truck, lateral camera and related components from Enviro- EnviroTech Equipment in Land, Wisconsin for a total estimated cost of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Need any input from Director Lundin?
We're happy to answer any questions or give any tours. Once we have it, we'd be happy to have anyone take a ride along if you'd like, so.
Presuming there is an approval of this, I'll sign up for the ride along.
Okay.
Those are always informative. If you haven't been on a plow truck, I highly recommend it. Just a little ibuprofen before you get in that.
I was gonna say, we're hopeful we might be done for the season, but next season we'd welcome anyone, so.
If there are no other questions for, uh, the director on the proposal, um, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Strelcheck? We'll come back to that.
He's right there.
Commissioner Tilaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye.
Commissioner Bach?
Aye.
Commissioner Parish?
Aye.
Commissioner Bratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Nurban?
Aye.
Commissioners Sh- Strelcheck?
Mr. Strelcheck, the sewer truck.
Aye.
Aye, all right. The ayes have it. Um, next we have resolution forty-one ninety-five, a resolution establishing a financial policy statement nineteen for the sewer credit policy.
I will provide a few brief cut, um, clarifications. Number one is this is only for a sewer credit and only for water that does not actually enter into the sanitary sewer system. Because of how we complete our bu- budgeting and because of our customer base, most of you know, we have, well, we have taxpayers that are neither water nor sewer customers. We have sewer customers that are not water customers, water customers that are not sewer customers, and both water and sewer customers. This really applies to, um, any situation where water does not enter the system. So it does not include provisions for leaky toilets or, um, any other issues. It does memorialize the irrigation credit that we already provide. This just, um, clearly outlines that. The irrigation credit has typically applied to pool filling in the past as well. Both of those are incidents where that water doesn't ultimately enter into the sanitary sewer system. We just in a short period of time had two different non-water customers have issues on their water side that registered as usage that didn't ultimately get into the sewer system. And we don't currently have a provision for them to get a credit on their sewer bill. So this policy is intended to do that. It is issued truly as a credit, so we don't cut checks back to anyone. It would just apply to future bills so that we don't have to deal with collections and, and worrying about that. But we do think that it's an additional, um, policy that we can offer our rate pairs when there are issues with their systems.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Bratt?
Before these two, have we had any in the past five years before those two?
I'm not sure I'm directly aware of any, and honestly, if there were, they were likely denied because we, we didn't have a, um, policy before. And we didn't want to take these two cases kind of as case by case. We wanted to be able to have a policy that delineated their circumstances under which they have and have not. We have had, and what we include in here, uh, finance shared that there has been a request for the ice rink, um, in the past. And because that's out of season with our irrigation credit, it hasn't been something that we've been able to provide before. But it is something that we folded into this, um, policy. It, there is a little bit of difficulty on the customer's side for that burden of proof, to be able to prove to us that it didn't get into the sewer, um, system. We just happen to have two in a relatively short period of time that are able to provide that as evidence.
Any other questions? Uh, Administrator Jones.
Uh, not to belabor the discussion here, but I just wanna, um, offer a tip of the cap to, uh, Director Lundin and her staff for taking the initiative to develop this policy. Um, this is very, uh, customer centric, this policy. And as the council knows, uh, we have our first ever strategic plan. One of the five pillars, um, within that strategic, strategic plan is customer service. And so we think this effort here tonight, uh, supports that, uh, focus area within our plan. And, um, thank you to Director Lundin and her staff.
I would echo that. Um, there's other communities that I think probably would have just swept this under the rug and say, tough, you had an issue with your system, but we're not dealing with it. So it's, it's good we're going the extra mile when, when the people can prove that they didn't put the water down the sewer, that we're not charging them for it. That's going above, above and beyond, so. Well done.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments, questions or praise for staff? Hearing and seeing done, uh. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That two moves on. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? We're at the end of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we will now convene as the common council. Call the meeting to order and start with the pledge. Please call the roll.
Alderman Strelcheck?
Here.
Alderman Tilaco?
Here.
Alderman Meyer? Alderman Hancher?
Here.
Alderman Bach?
Here.
Alderman Parish?
Here.
Alderman Bratt?
Here.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Here.
And Mayor Nurban?
Here. First up, we have a public hearing, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four sixteen seventy-three. An ordinance amending the following for the property located at twenty-eight oh three and twenty-nine oh nine West McQuan Road. A, the city's zoning map within chapter fifty-eight of the McQuan Municipal Code from single family residential one acre R three to institutional public service IPS and planned unit development overlay PUD. And B, the city's u- land use map for residential one to one and a half acre to institutional. This was recommended by the planning commission on December second and a first reading at common council on December tenth. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All is in fa- in favor of going into public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're in public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're back and we'll immediately consider this ordinance. Is there a, a motion?
Move approval.
Motion in a.
Second.
In a second. Any comments or questions from staff? Uh, Alderman Meyer?
Uh, question for staff. What limitations are there on the IP? And what I mean is that for development wise, I know they said that they, it's gonna be for expansion of the lot and for the other building, but there's still a lot of other property around that for that. So, um, just wondering what the limitations are. I do remember that back on, a while back, we had some, some of that along Buntruck Road had that, and then there was a developer wanting to come in and, and because it was a certain type of housing, it fall under that category, and so it was, uh, never developed. But I mean, proposed coming in there and having some apartments in that area.
So this property, what we did is we expanded the IPS to the, the, the property is split zone right now. So there's our three residential on one half and then institutional on the other. So, uh, in exchange for allowing institutional on the other half, we put a PUD over it that only allows for religious institutions to be on the site. So it was kind of a protection. So the only thing they can do with there is anything related to a religious institution. If they wanted to do senior housing or something else, they'd have to come back and amend their PUD.
But they would be eligible to do that.
Well, anybody could come back. They could ask for rezoning at any time to do that. We didn't want to put, we didn't want to give them the base zoning of IPS though, then, then the permitted uses under the IPS, they would be allowed to do without any rezoning request. But this would require a rezoning request to do anything other than religious institutions on site.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Good question. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, um, please call the roll.
Alderman Strelcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tilaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parish?
Aye.
Alderman Bratt?
Aye.
And Alderman. And Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Onto our next item, personal appearances and public comment. Citizens, citizens wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. If you desire to be heard on agenda items, you may be heard when that item is considered on the agenda. Please speak into the microphone at the podium. Time limit is five minutes. Uh, we have one person registered to speak, Kara Stawicki, um, one-five, one-four oh four-five Twin Oaks Lane. Hello?
Hi, um, yes, my name is Kara Stawicki, and I reside, as you mentioned, at one-four-zero-four-five Twin Oaks Lane, which is the far northwest corner of Macwan there, and, um, Alderman Strelcheck is my alderman. Who I had the pleasure of speaking with on the phone last night. Um, I'm here for the first time to discuss with you a couple of things and my preeminent concern about, um, the police, not, not just the response to what occurred at my home this past Saturday evening. But, public sharing of information in relation to crimes here in Macwan. Um, so just to give you a little bit of background, um, my home, my husband and I and my daughter left to go to a play, six fifteen on Saturday night. And in between six fifteen and nine o'clock, my home was broken into, and my home was broken into, or really in a very aggressive fashion, in the sense that they shot a BB gun from my backyard into a side window. And then proceeded to realize that there wasn't an alarm system, and then they shattered the second story balcony, uh, patio door and scaled the back of my house and gained entry, gained entry into my home. Um, my safe was taken with all of our vital documents and, as well as much, um, jewelry that had sentimental and, as well as monetary value. In the days since that happened, and obviously this is very fresh and I'm very shaken by what happened, I've discovered some things that happened locally that were shared with me with the police who arrived at the scene, who were kind and prompt and courteous. But they shared some things with me, and then I found out the day after that a very similar event, almost identical event, occurred in the house directly behind mine, just mere weeks before that. And so, just in thinking about this and realizing, as I started to delve into what is shared with our communities, not only like amongst neighbors, but how are the police proactively sharing this information with people so that it doesn't hopefully happen again? And I'm not saying that police can prevent these things from happening, but making people aware. When I looked at the Macwan, um, Facebook page, when I looked at the departmental website, nothing is shared about crimes in the area. And my question is, how many crimes need to occur and how many types of these types of burglaries need to happen for proactive sharing of information to happen? I took the liberty just for a minute today to look at what other police departments share, and if it's okay, I'd like to come up and pass out copies. Um, for Germantown, for, for instance, shares weekly on their Facebook page, the number of burglaries. They don't share necessarily specifics, but they share what their police departments are up to. And then the second, um, paper is a copy of a previous police chief here in Macwan had, and this is a number of years ago, they were posting seven, eight years ago. But they were on the app next door that would actually talk about, be alert in this neighborhood, such and such crime happened. Nothing, I mean, I went down a rabbit hole today of where are we sharing information for residents to know? That these things are going on and how many have to occur. Um, I'm really here to just kind of open the dialogue and see how we can be better in the future, because I don't want this to happen to anybody else. I mean, when I found out that the house behind me had been burglarized in exactly the same way, the weekend after that home was burglarized, I had five eleven-year-olds in my basement for a sleepover, and I think that those thieves were in my backyard watching, and that scares me. And I'm not saying that police could've prevented it, but we need to talk about how we're gonna talk about this as, as a community. The last thing that I do wanna share is that I felt somewhat assured when the police left on Saturday evening, but this morning I was driving down Pioneer Road right next to my house and drove past Hawksblen subdivision, which is a very affluent, two-million-dollar home subdivision. And there was a, a random black SUV that was vacant parked at the entrance of the subdivision. I stopped and called the police, just because my hackles are up because of what just happened to me very close to that area. And I called the police and an officer promptly responded, and I shared with him why I was calling this information in, and he said, I didn't know that that crime occurred in your neighborhood. It happened less than seventy-two hours ago. Why within the department does an officer who's responding this morning not know what happened less than a, less than a mile away? Like, I, I'm just, I'm thinking, this is not a department that's responding to homicides on a regular basis. Look, how are we using our time and energy and resources to help keep our community safe? So I'm just gonna share this with you, and then I don't wanna go on ad nauseam, but I. I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions.
I think this is going to be a topic of future discussion at public safety, perhaps, per the recommendation of Alderman Strelcheck. Um, this is just public comment, so we receive comment, but we're not, it's not on the agenda, so we're not having active dialogue, but it's gonna be a topic at a future.
And the last thing I did actually wanna share was that, in digging into this, I actually looked at any of the documents that are on the, on the public portal for information for Macwan. And Macwan published this lovely financial report on page ten that I kind of dog-eared today. It shows the, like, a pie chart of the financials for the Police Department. Cedarburg, forgive the terrible copy that I printed, has comparisons of what they respond to, how many officers responded to what. Why are we not sharing this data with citizens? And again, this is all after the fact, but it's just a larger picture, in my opinion, of what we're sharing with residents. It felt today like there was no transparency about what's being done. And that concerns me. We pay a lot of money to live in what we consider to be a safe place, but safe place has crime just like anywhere else. So, I'll just.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much for your time.
And I look forward to hopefully coming back and continuing the conversation as to what can be done. And I actually had a lovely opportunity to talk with Chief Riley today for a little bit. He was very open to hearing my concerns, and I appreciate that, but I definitely think that there needs to be some more dialogue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, very quickly, Alderman Strelcheck?
I know, and I can either take my five minutes here or I can take it there, so I'll keep it brief. This is my district, and this is a resident that reached out to me last night that I had a nice conversation with. I just wanted to thank her and the community, 'cause I know there's other community members, uh, in the audience today that came forward to speak on this. I wanted to share with everybody that in the previous meeting, which is, um, our meeting where we can ask for agenda items to be added. I asked for a review of kind of our policy on, uh, police communications as well as, um, just how we disseminate information within the community. Um, Alderman Bach offered, you know, as a representative of the Public Safety Committee to take that item up and to review that, was grateful for the opportunity to work on something with some meat on the bones. Um, I also wanted to share with just the community that we've got a very safe community. Again, this doesn't come up often, but it does come up on occasion as, as break-ins do come in, and our police department is amongst the best in the state. Um, I wanted to thank our police department for their willingness to not only work with the resident and the positive feedback that I've received from her on the phone today, as well as other neighbors. And, and their fair and unbiased way of dealing with the issues within our community as they do come up, even though they don't come up often. Um, so just sharing that there's already action in place to address this on, on your behalf. So, thank you for speaking out. I'm glad you made it public record. Not everybody at home knows the conversation that was in the last meeting, so I just wanted to share that we are addressing this as a community already, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to public officials' reports. I have nothing. Uh, does the city administrator have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have a very full agenda this evening, but I have one, um, key announcement that I'd like to share here tonight. Uh, in-person absentee voting for the spring election, which will take place on Tuesday, April first, will begin next week. This is early voting, as most of us know it. Um, that'll take place here at City Hall between the dates of Tuesday, March eighteenth through Friday, March twenty-eighth. Again, Tuesday, March eighteenth through Friday, March twenty-eighth, uh, registered voters here in Macwan can vote early, uh, in-person absentee here at City Hall between the hours of eight AM and four-thirty PM. Uh, many races will be on the ballot, including, uh, the Justice for the Wisconsin Supreme Court, Superintendent for the Department of Public Instruction. And we also have local elections here for both the school board, uh, our mayor, and, uh, two aldermanic seats on the Macwan Common Council. So again, uh, early absentee voting starts next Tuesday, March eighteenth, and runs through Friday, March twenty-eighth prior to the April one election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have twelve sets of minutes from boards and commissions or other staff reports, along with, uh, one resolution. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Uh, Alderman Parrish?
Yep, the committee talked about polling, uh, ordinance, the first reading, and three?
We're not the ordinance first reading just yet. Yeah, I gotta read those. I'm, I'm just talking about the consent agenda for items A through M.
Thank you.
I know what you're talking about, though. We'll get there.
Then I won't bring it up again.
We'll bring it up in, well, thirty seconds, please. Um. Is there a motion for the consent agenda to approve items A through M? Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those items are approved. Onto ordinance first readings. Um, ordinance first readings will not be acted upon unless there's a suspension of the rules, um, and recorded by a majority of two-thirds vote of all aldermen. So, first ordinance, twenty-two-five sixteen seventy-five, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-eight of the Macwan Municipal Code, allowing showroom sales facilities as a conditional use within the city's B-four zoning districts. This was recommended by the Planning Commission, February twenty-fourth, and further recommenda- or, was it? Further recommended by welfare, Public Welfare Committee? That's next month, okay. That's a forecut, foreshadowing of what might happen next month. It is a first reading. Ordinance twenty-two-five sixteen seventy-six, an ordinance amending chapter fourteen of the Macwan Municipal Code related to alcoholic beverage licensing. This was recommended earlier this evening by Finance and Personnel Committee, and is a first reading. And ordinance twenty-two-five sixteen seventy-seven, an ordinance amending section two dash two-thirty of the Macwan Municipal Code relating to employee discipline. This was recommended earlier this evening by Finance and Personnel, but there may be a motion to suspend the rules. Alderman Parrish, you got that?
I got this, guys. I had moved to suspend the rules and, uh, consider ordinance twenty-two-five sixteen seventy-seven tonight, which would put the employee code of conduct back in full force in effect.
Second.
There's motion in a second, so we have to vote to suspend the rules first. So the following vote is for suspension of the rules so we can consider the ordinance. Um, please call the roll.
Alderman Tilaco? Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brett?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt? And Alderman Strelcheck?
Aye.
Alright, now this ordinance that I just read that I won't read again is in front of us, uh, for consideration, um. Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Just for those following along at home, there was a typographical error that happened some number of years ago that resulted in a section of the code being omitted, and we are putting it back where we found it. Um. Hence the desire to do it as expeditiously as possible. So if there are no other comments or questions, um, please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brett?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck?
Aye.
And Alderman Tilaco?
Aye.
That passes. Uh, onto ordinances, we have no other ordinances this evening. Next is resolutions. Resolution forty-one eighty-three, a resolution adopting the twenty-two-five City of Macwan Comprehensive Park Recreation and Open Space Plan. This was recommended by the Park and Open Space Board on February nineteenth and was also recommended by the Planning Commission on February twenty-fourth.
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Uh, just to the people at home watching, uh, have a little bit of idea what this is about, there's a, a plan, a comprehensive plan for the parks, we have to update every five years if we hope to ever get any grants, money from the state or the federal government. So this is a part of a ongoing process to keep those plans up to date and relevant, um, so that when we, the need arises, we can qualify for such things and helps guide other policy decisions through, throughout the years as we budget for things. So there's enough of a backdrop. See, this isn't budgetary. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The plan is adopted. Uh, Resolution forty-one eighty-four, resolution approving the first amendment to a license agreement with AT&amp;T, extending the term for the cellular tower located at one-one-eight-hundred Northport Washington Road through twenty forty-one. This was recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on this item? Uh, there's a little bit of money involved here. All is, uh, please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brett?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tilaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
That resolution passes. Onto Resolution forty-one eighty-five, a resolution clearing the personal property tax rule of delinquent accounts deemed uncollectible for tax rule twenty-twenty-three. This was recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, a comment is just a reminder, if the public reads this, that we're not just writing it off. Uh, many of them are going just to collections, so it's a, it's a shift in the books. Um, you'll see some businesses that are currently open.
Writing them off for the purposes of calculating, uh, fiscal performance, but we won't stop trying to collect it, correct?
Agreed.
Thank you for the added color. Any other comments or questions? Um, if not, please call the roll.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brett?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tilaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Uh, onto Resolution forty-one eighty-six, a resolution amending the city's FY twenty-five compensation plan in connection with reorganization of the Public Works Department. This is recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions for staff about the reorganization? Hearing and seeing none, uh, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That two passes. Onto Resolution forty-one eighty-seven, a resolution approving amendments to the City of Macwan fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five related to athletic fields, Lemke Park concession fees and pool fees. This was recommended by the Park and Open Space Board on February twenty-ninth and was considered earlier this evening by Public Works.
Public Works approved that, so I'm going to, uh, move the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion from the, from the council? Uh, hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brett?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tilaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
That passes as well. Onto Resolution forty-one eighty-eight, a resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-five Macwan Thievesville Bike and Pedestrian Way Plan, recommended by, this was recommended by the Joint Macwan Thievesville Bike and Pedestrian Way Commission, February thirteenth. And further recommendation forthcoming this evening from Public Works.
Public Works approved, so I move the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Um, Alderman Bach?
You know, it's, um, when I looked, looked at this, I just struggle to kind of approve a consultant report as, as an official plan. You know, I'm not, not, not sure we've ever done that. In this con- this is a consultant report, and in that report, there is so much. Uh, and I, and I get that you need to approve a plan for state funds and all of that, but I wish that we would've been able to take that consulting report. Pick out the golden nuggets that are actually doable and maybe make something happen over the next five years, because much of what is in that report is just never gonna happen. And then what you, what happens is, you know, you've got a consultant report, and you spin your wheels, and you don't make any progress, and then five years from now, we're gonna have another consultant report, and you gotta go through the whole process. So I just was wishing that, y- you know, we, we've got, this, this committee is really good-hearted. I understand they don't have a budget. I'm not sure what their connection is to the Parks Board. I'm not sure what their connection is to Macwan Thievesville Trails, and so we saw this, you know, this great consultant report of all these good things, much of which were never gonna be able to. And so we saw this, you know, this great consultant report of all these good things, much of which we're never gonna be able to afford, but there are some little things that you, you can do. And I guess I would have liked to have seen this as the, the report as an addendum, but much like, you know, the sewer group and all, all those things where you see, okay, over the next five years, this is what we're gonna do. These three or four things, this is the cost estimate. You know, you don't even have to have exact estimate. You could have five-dollar signs or three-dollar signs, you know, and then each year, you could move it to another year if it's not accomplished, but then you have something that maybe would happen. So that, those are, those are my comments on, on, on that report, and I'm sure some others will have some, something to say.
Alderman Parrish.
Thank you. Yeah, let me just piggyback on that because you said that really gracefully, probably more than I could have, but I guess I've had a little bit of, let me start off by thanking those who contributed to this report, which is an excellent report. I'm so glad it's not like a fifty-page report. It's actually a very concise, informed, graphical, well-laid-out report, so kudos to the, to Graff, who I believe prepared it, and the staff who assisted and pedestrian and bikes committee who helped prepare it. I've had some concerns from the beginning about the third-party nature of it, you know. Alderman Bach articulated it's a joint Thievesville-McQuon committee, who we appreciate their work and their recommendations, but we as a body need to decide what's in the best interest of, of our residents. And it was an open survey, so really anyone could have participated. I'm not sure how they know that, you know, six, seventy-five percent of the participants were from McQuon and then I think five percent were not from either, is what I saw. So I don't know that it was a controlled study. I just don't know enough about it. But to, the wording of the motion tonight is adopting this bike and pedestrian plan. I almost wanna rephrase it to accepting the plan. And just, if you actually read through the report by the end of it, it comes up, you know, it says this is meant to be updated annually. They say, first of all, do the whole report over every five years and then update it annually and pick out your priorities. And so that's where I want us as a body, I'd like, and I know tomorrow, or on the fourteenth, the pedestrian committee is meeting. And this is actually on their list to now prioritize what's in here. And so I, I guess my request is to have this open dialogue with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. I don't feel like some of my requests for Range Line and, and the schoolwork and really connecting, I feel like we need to connect the schools to the neighborhoods, so kids can get safely from their homes to the schools. And it, to me, it feels like there's a lot of outside recommendations here that kinda help connect us to the rest of the region. Whereas I think let's get our house in order first. Let's get kids to school safely and connectivity to the retail areas to support business. And so I think we need to ultimately adopt the SIP list and I hope we can come up, please come forward with some recommendations, and I think we should reconsider the wording of this motion. I mean, we should accept it, not adopt it. Thank you. I'd like to hear what else my colleagues have to say about the subject.
Or if I may at least answer a couple of those questions and then of course if anyone else does. So a couple of things, it is our standard practice to issue a scope of services and a request for proposals. That's exactly what was done for the Park and Open Space Board Plan, and that was also done for the BikeWay Plan. You may have recalled the BikeWay actually went through this for eighteen months to go through the scope of services to debate the delineation of the cost breakdown with Thievesville. They are by ordinance, both of the city and of Thievesville, a joint committee. And when ultimately they couldn't get to a recommendation based on the price point, then they applied for the grant, which ultimately funded the plan. And there was a memorandum of understanding that split that cost between the city and Thievesville for the local portion of that project. They then worked with a consultant to both seek public input and, and unfortunately, they're not here to speak to the controls that they put to try to ensure that it was McQuon or Thievesville residents that answered. But in the end, it is supposed to look at the umbrella of bicycle and pedestrians. Your points about what ultimately gets done is the decision-making process that couldn't yet happen until we had a plan. So now that we have a plan, the Bike and Pedestrian Way Commission can do as Park and Open Space Board does, as Public Works does, as all of the committees do, and go through and prioritize the work that needs to be done. We do this for roads, for drainage CIP, for most any capital funding source that we have, is we go through and we identify the list of projects, which this plan does, and then we prioritize them and move them forward. But no one has told us some of these things will never get done. So those are your decisions to make, and if there is an indication that some of these projects won't move forward, that is that dialogue that needs to take place with the BikeWay Commission. But they will go through their process and then make recommendations as a part of that project. I, I will somewhat clarify that it is a part of the right-of-way asset management for bike facilities, so that is where their budget comes from, is for those assets within the right-of-way. And already includes decisions that this council has made, for example, the extension of sidewalk on Swan Road, the addition of sidewalk on the west side of Wawatosa Road. And this document is intended to help guide those decisions moving forward in terms of where those facilities should be located and where they should be considered. So while ultimately from this, there could be a five-year plan, it doesn't want to ignore where there may be other opportunities to require the addition of facilities through development. We do that quite often, where we require the developer to follow either our park plan, our road plan, our drainage plan, our BikeWay plan, that there's an opportunity to leverage that. There's also the consideration of when we do road work, to then be able to look at the plan to see were there bicycle or pedestrian facilities recommended. You may recall that you've recently made two decisions related to that, the addition of paved shoulders on Zedler and last year for the extension of paved shoulders on Highland Road. So these are all consistent things that the committee has intentionally done to request your approval or authorization of funding through the various processes that we already have. So this is just the next formalization of that, so that as you all continue to conduct business and have decision, that you, or make decisions, that you have a document to fall back on, that's looked at the city holistically to discuss some of these. And it doesn't mean that there may not be other projects that are prioritized that weren't identified in that. There, there can certainly be that as well, but this is kind of the the umbrella, big picture plan based on demographics and developments and needs of where we should be considering those various facilities.
If, you know, if I may too, maybe there's a communication piece too, because if I'm correct, this overlaps with Thievesville as well. This is McQuon and Thievesville. And I don't know, I mean, I don't think there's any council connection to that committee at all, you know, like some of the other committees. There's no
There is an aldermatic rep position, but you are correct, it has been left vacant for the last several years.
Yeah, so maybe that's part of, part of the issue too. And then you've got the McQuon Thievesville Trails and you're gonna overlap probably a little bit with the Park Board.
Actually, I would argue this is exactly why we want this plan, is to be able to deal with entities like the MT Trails. So it is our plan and the city's vision that is followed. This is actually what prompted the Park and Open Space Board Plan Update five years ago, was all of these well-intended people coming forward to donate things that we didn't ask for, or maybe we didn't need, and then we were ultimately left with the burden to finance or maintain. So that, that actually was with all of those things in mind, and we would love for the MT Trails Foundation to then use this plan in their future fundraising efforts to be able to implement some of this.
Yeah, I, I guess my, that's, that's great, because like when you have your, you mentioned like the sewer, you know, you look at that over the next six years, you kinda have a clear idea of what might be happening. I'm just hoping that somebody is gonna take the leadership and be able to do that from this report and create a little five-year plan from that that's manageable, and so it just doesn't get lost. And I don't know whose responsibility that is, but I, my guess is that committee is gonna need a little administrative help to put that plan together. That's just my
And they do, so they review the road program, the five-year road program every year to see where it touches any of the recommendations that they have, so they can be sure to incorporate it into that. And then they make an annual request to you as the common council as a part of the annual budget process for funding based on their prioritized projects. And obviously, if, if the funding isn't designated, and they understand where they fall. I, I don't, I don't know that anybody envies your position, because this is just talking about BikeWay. This isn't also talking about roads and also talking about infrastructure or parks or development. This is only one piece of the larger puzzle that you all have to solve, especially when you look at budgets. But it is what they use to inform so that they're not picking and choosing projects, that they are having a, a plan that they're utilizing to base their goals and decisions on to make those recommendations and requests to this body.
So maybe the accepting piece might work with, with me rather than
I think that's statutory.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's a difference legally, attorney Sajak, of acceptance versus adopting. Because if it was adopting, I just feel like more, I would need more time to make sure I'm, like for example, there's, they recommend a, a, a bridge across the river.
That's Sewer PAC's trans, long-range transportation plan. So excited in here.
But by it being in here, and then we adopted, that's not something I would wanna fund.
That has been in there for at least the last thirteen years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's in a lot of our documents as well, cause it follows the
But to adopt it is signaling that we're okay with it, isn't it? So I don't know.
I'm just saying it's already in other documents that
Well, I guess that was my question for the attorney.
It's just a project we'll probably never fund, cause it's, the last cost estimate was twenty million dollars for that. Yeah. Alderman Stralcek.
So I guess the question at hand is the, if we use the word adopt, are we agreeing to everything that's in the plan? Or do we wanna have some feedback on it, just says, saying we're adopting it as a, as a guiding light for them to work and come forward with recommendations?
You're adopting a set of recommended ideas for a plan. You're not committing to doing any of them. In fact, we will probably do almost no, none of them.
So based on that, I'm okay with the wording either way. I sat on this committee for a year and they are a hard-working group. They care about bike and bike safety. They have some good ideas. They've come forward with funding. They're very frustrated because every time something comes forward for funding, we shoot it down, cause we're trying to, you know, hold the line with no tax increases.
But I'll say, we don't, we don't shoot it down every time. We've, we've agreed to widen the shoulders on Highland and we are doing it again on Zedler. So we do chip away at it, but we don't often poach one of these proj, projects on its own. We'll do it in conjunction with something else, so there's at least some economies of scale.
The year that I sat on it, we shot it down, and the year after, we shot it down. So other years, we've done better. I agree. However, some, my point is, a little better integration with this committee here, just kinda maybe on their findings, maybe a quarterly kinda, you know, statement of mission and what they're working on. You know, in the minutes, it's, we read the minutes and we see the minutes, but really kind of a statement of what they're looking to do would be helpful as far as like planning. I've advocated for the, the, I've advocated for the bike pass along Highland Road at nauseam, as well as other areas.
I don't mean to suggest that we're not gonna do any of them, but if we want to do more of these, the power to do them lies right here with these eight or nine people. We've got no one to complain to but ourselves.
I feel like there's been sufficient discussion here on the record to demonstrate we don't all agree with every recommendation in this report, and there's no commitment whatsoever. To do any of them, it's kind of like a, it's a high-level plan. It's a little different than the Parks and Open Space Plan in my mind.
My
Oh, I, I think they're exactly the same, except we might like more of those ideas.
Well, and that's what I mean about weighing those decisions. You may support more of the parks ones and there may be others that don't support any of them, or you know, whatever it is.
I support almost all of them over time, whereas in this, I fundamentally disagree with a lot of the rec, not a lot of them, several recommendations in here. So I don't, I just don't wanna be cited by staff or the committee later on as, oh, you guys adopted this and
That's why we get the power of the purse.
Why didn't you speak up then? And so here we are, speaking up. This is our one chance. Here you go.
And BikeWay recognizes they're only a recom, they're not even a standing committee, so they are a recommending body, so they don't have the authority to make any of these decisions, which is why they make the recommendations to you all as decision-makers, or sometimes through Public Works as the decision-makers.
All I would like to see is twenty twenty-five, two or three bullet points, low-hanging fruit, some things that they think they could accomplish. Twenty twenty-six.
It won't, it won't be twenty twenty-five, cause there's, there's not money.
Twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, you know, those, and just say, hey, you know, we're, we're repaving this, we might be able to look at this, so you've got each year for the next four years.
And I just wanna clarify, that is in the budget documents. We, we fill that out every single year with a five-year request of what all of that is. So that is standard, and again, we do that for parks and BikeWay and roads and everything else, that we have that five-year CIP. Actually, sewer's ten now, but for everything else, there is that five-year that identifies both the funding and the projects that, that the committees have, have prioritized and are requesting.
Alderman Stralcek has his hand up first, I think.
I'm gonna just finish my thought. So this document is, is a, is a guideline of, of recommendations from a firm that we hired. I think what we're looking for as, as a council is, is a vision to agree on kinda moving forward. What I'm a little pulled back on is the fact that we've approved this, we've approved this, and everything comes forward and it's an individual project that doesn't tie into a vision, so I'm willing to adopt this, but I really want a vision statement of prioritization as how it comes forward, maybe a committee of the whole discussion, or wherever you deem appropriate to kinda go through where we're at. Because the communities that are moving forward and are creating a pedestrian-friendly and a bike-safe community that are around the United States, not even Wisconsin, they have a vision and a plan, and they really have an overarching plan in which they wanna approve and a certain level they wanna get at for bike safety and, and and bike and pedestrian traffic within the community. The idea of this committee is to have that there and have a group advocating for it. But it comes forward in a project by project by project. As we've even stated as a council tonight, we approve one Z, two Z, three Z. Let's work on that vision and see where that fits in with the pulse of the council, and then we'll vote on each item accordingly based on the vision.
We, we have a committee. I think we're giving that committee direction in our comments here tonight, so we don't, I don't think this is a committee of the whole thing. I think the kid, the, not yet anyway. The Bike and Pedestrian Way Commission needs to meet and prioritize the list on there and make recommendations. Maybe we'll have a a broader discussion about it at budget time. No, but the, the purse strings are controlled by this body. So, you know, there, there has to be an alignment of eyes and stomach at some point to not to discourage anyone, but that's just the reality of where we're at. Anyone else? I'm losing track of everyone raising their hand here. Alderman Hancher.
Well, I think the point of this document was that you have an overriding look at what the, the, the city is looking at, and then what makes sense to have these bike paths and pedestrian paths. You just can't have, cause you have people coming forward all the time, oh, we, we like to have this path, but doesn't make any sense to put it there. And I guess this document is kinda like saying, well, these are the places where it makes sense to connect the city together, as opposed to, oh, this doesn't really, put a bike path in the area where it makes no sense. So we talked about this in Public Works a couple of months ago about, this document is really about identifying where is the best spots to, to make connections for the, for the, the paths, to make it inclusive in the city.
Alderman Meyer.
Just shortly, I mean, if the common council feels more comfortable, we could table it and have them come back with their priorities for the next, each one of the years. And that way you'd be more satisfied with what they are looking at would be their higher priorities for it.
Well, I'll, I'll say this. We had a chance to take a swing at this pinata back in, oh, December. So it was a long committee of the whole, and if we didn't like things in the plan, we should have kicked them out then. At this point, the consultant is done working on it, cause we had our comment period. I, I don't think there's any harm in adopting this as a high-level multi, you know, multi-decade-long plan, and and the committee will go forth and prioritize and bring some, some projects forward, regardless if we vote on this tonight or not. They're gonna have a meeting on it, whether we table it or not. I'd, I'd rather move it forward. And the reality of budgets and the things we really want will come out of the process naturally at the committee, and the things we don't want probably won't come out of the committee, and if they do, we won't pay And the things we don't want probably won't come out of the committee, and if they do, we won't pay for them, because we have that ability to do so. But I do have one, one request. Whoever wins common council president, please appoint Alderman Bach to the BikeWay Committee. He's, he's got lots of good ideas. I think he can provide the direction they maybe need and give, help them with the process. So sorry to sign you up for something, but... Um, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, just to answer Alderman Parrish's question, I'm not honestly familiar. I did try to do a quick Google. I didn't see anything specifically that says, uh, adopt or accept the plan or not. What I can tell you is generally when you apply for funding, grant funding, one of the questions is have you adopted a plan? And so I think that that's typically the word that you look for. And that's consistent with how we do lots of other things. We, you know, just earlier tonight, we adopted a park and recreation plan. We have a five-year CIP that we adopt. You know, th, there's lots of plans that the council adopts on a regular basis that sets your kind of long-term goals and thoughts, with the expectation that in most cases, it's just that. It's the wish list of things that we wanna get to. And, you know, there's been plenty of times even here in Mequon, where you look at like the five-year CIP plan, for example, that you do your five-year CIP and then you get to the end and you're gonna update it to the new five-year plan and the same items are on the list because you haven't gotten to it. So at the end of the day, it's just a proposal and a thought.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. I just, I don't agree that it's my wish list, but, but I think we have enough discussion here to, we have to move forward with it.
All right.
Let's do a SIP list. That's what we all want. So it sounds like we'll get it from the pedestrian committee.
All right. Um, let's call a roll, unless there's any other comments or questions. Please call a roll.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
A hopeful aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We've adopted a plan. The BikeWay Committee's got, and Pedestrian Way Committee's got their work cut out for them this next year. Next up, Resolution 4189, a resolution authorizing a contract for preemption upgrades to the highway-grade crossing on Mequon Road, required to activate the traffic signals at the intersection of Mequon Road and Weston Drive to CDL Electric LLC of Pittsburgh, Kansas, in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved of it. I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? It long last, we are gonna break free of WISDOT being in our way. Alderman Gebhardt.
Great, great news to, as you said, move this project along. The one piece I didn't understand is, is a look at the fiscal impact narrative. It talks about an estimate of originally five hundred thousand dollars and through the course of time, we've determined that some of the work that was estimated may not be needed to complete what it is that we need to have done. And that cost now is seventy-five thousand. Is there savings because of that?
We're just not spending, we're not spending TIF money that's budgeted, but...
That's what I lost sight of. Okay, very, very good. Thank you.
So it might allow us to do something else, but there's also a time running out on the clock quickly for the TIF money, so... Yeah, the, the five hundred thousand was a, I know I can get it done for that number and not think about it too hardly, number from WISDOT, and it included what?
It also included the actual relocation of the railroad signals. Because we narrowed the cross-section, they hadn't yet had the determination as to whether the signals would be in the correct location. So the original agreement was under the assumption that the railroad signals would have to move, and they do not have to move.
Any other comments or questions? All right, this is budgetary, so everyone emphatically vote yes if you pref, if you approve and hopefully no one disapproves, but you're allowed to disagree. Please call the roll.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
And Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can't wait. Someone call CDL tomorrow and, or let's, in fact, I'll, I'll come in special and sign this early before I go on vacation next week, just to make sure we keep moving. Uh, Resolution 4190, resolution awarding a contract for the 2025 HVAC preventative maintenance and emergency response services to J.F. Ahern Company, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for the total estimated cost of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved, and I move Resolution 4190.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions from any of the aldermen? Hearing done, please call the roll.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
And Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
That two passes. On to Resolution 4191, a resolution authorizing supplemental inspection services in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars during the 2025 construction season with the following engineering firms: Grafe USA, Capern Associates, M Squared, Sigma Group, R.A. Smith, and Rupert, Rupert Milky. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved of it, and so I move motion, uh, Resolution 4191.
Second, move for approval, correct?
Yeah, move for approval. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
That two passes. On to Resolution 4192, a resolution approving an interim governmental cooperation agreement for law enforcement mutual aid in Ozaki County. Recommendation forthcoming from public safety.
Public safety discussed, Resolution 4192 this evening, and recommended approval, and I move approval tonight.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions, comments from any of the aldermen? If there is the chiefs here, just in case. Uh, hearing and seeing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, okay, okay. There's a, there's a second order impact on potential cost. So we'll make this a roll call vote at the attorney's suggestion.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
And Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
An item carries as well. On to Resolution 4193, resolution approving receipt of a donation from the Mequon-Thiensville Community Foundation, the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for the purchase, training, and certification of a successor K-9 unit. Recommendation forthcoming from public safety.
As you recall, K-9 Duke unexpectedly passed away. We had a anonymous donor come forward and offered to, to make this donation for a new K-9. That money was then given to the Mequon-Thiensville Community Foundation, and we discussed that tonight. The, the public safety committee recommends approval, and I move approval this evening, thanks to the donor and the community foundation.
Motion in a second. Yes, the relationship between the community foundation and the city on these K-9 units has been nothing short of outstanding. It really makes a big impact. And if you've seen them out and in action, if you do a ride-along, they, they really, they really add a lot of value. And, um, man, people are really compliant when you get the dog out. It's amazing. So it keeps our officers safer too. So great stuff. Any other comments or questions from anyone? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
And Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
That two carries. Looking forward to the new doggy when we get him. Resolution 4194, resolution approving the purchase of a replacement sewer televising truck, lateral camera, and related components from EnviroTech Equipment of Landin, Wisconsin, for a total estimated cost of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. This was recommended earlier this evening by the Sewer Utility District Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
And Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Our final resolution tonight, 4195, a resolution establishing, establishing financial policy statement number nineteen for the sewer credit policy. This was also recommended earlier this evening by the Sewer Utility District Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
And Alderman Bach.
Aye.
That one passes as well. We have no specified unfinished business from prior meetings. We have two items under specified new business, appointment of Scott Regal to the Board of Appeals and appointments to the Mid-Marine Municipal Court. Justin and Will will be our representatives, assuming we approve these. This is actually just kind of finding what's been going on for years. And we found out we actually have to formally adopt them as our representatives, so we're here to discuss it tonight. Is there a motion on any of these appointments?
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, all who's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those appointments pass. On to our last item this evening, potential closed session. Personnel evaluation of the city administrator. The common council may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five print one print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and then may reconvene into open session to take such action as deemed appropriate. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion in a second. All who's in favor, please say aye when we call the roll.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer. Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
And Mayor Nerven.
Aye. We'll now convene in the closed session. I do not anticipate we'll be back.